The House will come to order. Members, please take your seats. Sergeant in Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to provision of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by the Reverend Dr. Lisa Johnson, the St. Paul's Baptist Church, Richmond, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Heron.
Mr. Speaker, to this grand body of elected officials, let us pray. Oh wise and eternal Creator, Maker, Sustainer, and Ruler of the earth, we come this morning to thank you for the opportunity to lead your people in the state of Virginia. We acknowledge your presence in this space because your word tells us that where two or three would gather in your name be in our midst. So this morning, God, we pray for peace in our state. We ask that you would speak to those places where confusion is running roughshod. Speak peace to those places where hate is running roughshod. We ask you in the strong name of Jesus to remind our officials that you have told us what to do. You said that we are to walk humbly before you. We are to love mercy. We are to care for your people. We are to take care of those who are less fortunate. And so, God, we ask that when differences come into the room, we are reminded that we're more alike than we are different. We ask you, God, that we would remind our colleagues that as we come together, it is not about ego. It is not about self. It is about the people who have elected us. We ask you to remind us that you made it plain how we are to live. You tell us in Micah six, verse eight, what to do, what is just, and that we are to walk humbly with you. We ask that you would lead, God, and direct, God, and we promise to give your name praise. It's in the matchless name of Jesus the Christ and all of your holy names that we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. Clerk will close the roll.
Mr. Speaker, a quorum is present. Pursuant to House Rule Three, I have examined and approved the Journal of the House of Delegates for February sixth, twenty twenty five. Motions and resolutions under Rule Thirty-nine pursuant to the provisions of Rule Forty are now in order. Does the clerk have any announcements or communications?
No announcements or communications, Mr. Speaker. Therefore, in this first portion of the morning hour, the speaker asks that you use your Request to Speak button for the agenda items listed up on the voting board.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the gallery, we have seated with us today Mr. Osme- Osmeer Pishdat. I'd like him, ask him to stand, please. Mr. Pishdad is a wonderful person who is with us today. He is the father of two of our pages. Mr. Pish- Mr. Pishdash is from Melbourne, Florida. He was a Navy SEAL. He was with the Richmond Times-Dispatch for a number of years. We are very honored to have him with us today. Although he doesn't look it, he's ninety-four years old, and we are so proud of the work that he has done for our Capitol. He is, he is with the Richmond Times-Dispatch. He did a reporting in the Capitol Square, reported a lot of important moments in our history. Like the House to give him a very warm House welcome.
Welcome. Welcome. Welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Goochlan, Delegate Owen. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. The delegate from Henry, right, or Delegate McQuinn?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for an announcement.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, once again, we are excited about February the eleventh, twenty twenty-five at the Richmond, at the Siegel Center at seven PM, and this day is the unforgettable Seventeenth Annual Capitol Square Basketball Classic, where we will beat the Senate down.
How can you stop?
This special event of fundraisers dedicated to advancing cancer research and supporting those affected by this disease. This year's tournament will take place again on February the eleventh, at Tuesday at seven PM at the Siegel Center, and it promised to be an unforgettable day of competition, community, and generosity. With your support, we can continue to push the boundaries of what's possible and help bring us closer to a cure. And I'm just encouraging all of our colleagues to bring your checks Monday over the weekend. Bring them back Monday so we can write a check. And not only will we beat them on the basketball court, but we will beat them in giving. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for two introductions.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, I know the members are aware that our page classes typically come back for a reunion every year, and it's usually the most recent page class that comes back with gusto to visit all their friends, and then sort of over the years it dies off and they stop coming back. That is not true of the page class of nineteen seventy, who I would ask to rise. I think I got the year right, Jerry. Close enough. They're very old. And it's, it's, it's been a long time since there were pages. I think, I think one of them I caught coming out of the Members Lounge feeling very like familiar, let's just say. But it's so nice to, I think they are the most dedicated page class we have, and they come back very often, maybe even annually, but it's a great to see our, I say our pages, like I was born in nineteen seventy, so I don't know, I don't know what, you're that old, gentlemen. Welcome to page class of nineteen seventy, everybody. Thank you. I just stopped, Mr. Speaker, I decided to stop while I was way behind. Yes, sir.
It was not getting better. The second introduction.
Some very well-heeled and resourceful people up there who can probably punish me in ways that I can't imagine, so. The second introduction, Mr. Speaker, I saw one of our former colleagues, the gentleman from Spotsylvania, the former chairman of Privileges and Elections in the gallery, Delegate Mark Cole, if y'all would give him a warm welcome back to the Capitol. Come on, stand up.
Welcome back, Delegate Cole. Welcome back. The delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Lauffer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, we are joined by current students from the University of Virginia, and I'd ask them to rise if they're in the gallery. Excellent. And I'll say this on behalf of all the Wahoos in the House. These students are enrolled in the Public Service Pathways Program, representing career interests in the fields of diplomacy and security, education, global sustainability, justice, public arts, public health, and public interest technology. The Public Service Pathways Program is the first of its kind launched in twenty twenty-two at the university. It is designed to help students connect to public service as a personal commitment, a lifelong practice, and even a career, empowering undergraduate students to cultivate a commitment to helping communities flourish by participating in community-building events, learning from faculty, experts, and engaging in service experiences with the local community. Pathways participants build community with fellow student leaders and learn what it means to infuse their professional journey and the life with a public service mindset. So on behalf again of all the Wahoos in the House, please join me in offering them a warm House welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Prince, Prince William, Delegate Torian.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, in the gallery today, I am pleased to welcome mentees in the Alpha Beta Social Action Professional Exposure Program, and I would ask them to please stand. Mr. Speaker, the Alpha Beta Social Action Committee was curated for high school students eager to explore and engage in various business settings and professional industries. The powerful experience features six unique sections where students interact with industry-leading professionals in the field of healthcare, law, business, central and commercial banking, and legislative affairs. In its inaugural year, the program comprises mentees from Franklin Military Academy, Armstrong High School, St. Christopher School, and Highland Springs High School. Alpha Beta's Social Action Committee strives for continued greatness in this program as we aim to provide an invaluable and one-of-a-kind experience for both the mentees and mentors. Please join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Lovejoy.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House take up out of order HJ five eighty-one.
Clerk will report the resolution.
House document Resolution five hundred and eighty-one commending the Alpha Gal Foundation.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the resolution and I request to speak to the motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, members of the body, HJ five eighty-one is a commending resolution bringing awareness to the work of the Alpha Gal Foundation. In the gallery today, we have advocates from the Alpha Gal Foundation who will please rise. Alpha Gal Syndrome is a tick-borne condition and a potentially life-threatening food allergy characterized by adverse reactions to mammal meat and mammal byproducts. The Alpha Gal Foundation works diligently to raise awareness of Alpha Gal Syndrome and support people living with the condition. The group was established by Candace Mathis and Debbie Nichols after they were diagnosed with Alpha Gal Syndrome in twenty nineteen. What started as a blog to help people living with the condition has grown into a comprehensive nonprofit organization that fosters a sense of community and strives to educate the public about the condition. Mr. Speaker, members of the body, for that reason, I move the adoption of HJ five eighty-one.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Lovejoy, moves. All those in favor of the adoption of the resolution shall say aye. All those opposed, no. The resolution is adopted. Congratulations. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Today, in the back of the gallery, we have with us a former delegate known for his criminal justice work, and we miss him, his bright smile, and also his humor. We have with us former delegate Jeff Bourne.
Welcome back, Delegate Bourne. You're supposed to be sitting over there. Delegate from Powhatan, Delegate where?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and the minority leader has stolen some of my thunder, but I would ask the reunion class of pages to stand one more time. I've got a few facts to add to that.
Stand if y'all can. Too soon? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was too easy. The delegate from Powhatan, Delegate where?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The gentleman here today, there's several noteworthy elements of their class and a couple of other stories that they told me that I'd like to share with you today. They were on the classes generally of nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-one. They've been coming back every five years since nineteen ninety. So this is their fiftieth, fifty-fifth class reunion. In the class of nineteen seventy, the House welcomed its second and third black pages in the twentieth century, and one of them is with us today. The two of them were Willie Gould and Tony Johnson, respectively, of Norfolk and Richmond, and Mr. Johnson is with us today. In the nineteen seventy-one class, that was the first class who had a female page, Sally McCutcheon Johnston. I think she is not able to be with us today, but she was the first. It was a twenty-five-member class. They said a couple things, some of which I'll tell you and some of which I'll share with you privately, but one thing that they said was that nineteen seventy was a significant year. In another way, it was the first year the delegates had offices over across the street at what was then a hotel in his at what was then a hotel and is now the Attorney General's offices, and so you had a place where you could work in an office. Before that time, as some of you probably know, delegates had an office right here. This was their office at the desk. And I was told by another delegate that there was one secretary for every 10 delegates. Another thing they told me, and I'm glad that our class of pages are not here because I would not want to encourage mischief, but they said that in their era, they actually had a snowball fight between the pages and the delegates. So, no mischief that I'm aware of today, Mr. Speaker, but I'm certainly glad to join all in welcoming this class of pages back to us.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Jones.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I'd be ever so remiss if we did not recognize the minister that shared with us a powerful invocation this morning. She is the Reverend Dr. Lisa Johnson. I would ask that she would stand in the back. Reverend Johnson, she is the Encore Life Stage Pastor at the St. Paul's Baptist Church under the directorship and pastoral ministry of Lance Watson. She is a graduate of Virginia State undergrad. She received her D-Men, actually her Master's of Divinity from the Samuel Duette Proctor School of Theology at Virginia Union University, and as well went on to earn her Doctorate of Ministry from the Ashland Theological Ministry. She is learned, she is educated, she is dedicated to the work that God has called her to, and I would request that the members join me in extending a warm House welcome to the Reverend Dr. Lisa Johnson.
Welcome, Dr. Johnson. Delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I ask that we pull up out-of-order House Resolution 589, and I move that we adopt that resolution.
Clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution 589 commending Stan Holloway.
All those in favor of the adoption of the resolution will say aye. All those opposed, no. The resolution is adopted. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegates Corner, Delaney, Knight, Laverre Bowling, Marshall, and McClure. Clerk will announce the next order.
Second portion of the morning hour, member requests for legislation from the uncontested to the regular. I'm not aware of any such request.
Clerk will announce the next order.
Third portion of the morning hour, request for legislation goodbye for the day. Likewise, sir, I'm not aware of any.
Clerk will announce the next order.
Fourth and v. portion of the morning hour, reserved for member requests for points of personal privilege.
Clerk will call a calendar.
Calendar for today.
I'm sorry, hold on. Delegate from Albemarle, y'all better hit these buttons. Delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the point of personal privilege.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm standing in recognition of Black History Month, and I plan to talk about criminal justice, but before I do that, I want to own that this was a really hard speech for me to write. I tend to base my speeches in personal stories. It's hard to write a speech that's not about me, but I'm not personally impacted by the criminal justice system. I, in fact, have never even been pulled over by a police officer, and I'm hoping that once I get my plates, that streak will continue. But as I sat and prepared this speech and thought about why it was important to say what I'm about to say, I thought not about my own stories, but all the people who are affected and who are unable to stand here right now. Many of them, either because they're incarcerated, they're struggling, and they're unable to even vote to change a system that put them there. I think of my brother, who was routinely pulled over, and I think of my dad, who told him, "You need to make sure you do not wear a hoodie when you're driving. Don't look suspicious. Be careful if you see a police officer." So that's why I'm standing. I just want to own that before I start. The definition of justice is what is just, fair, and aligned with truth and fact. Lady Justice wears a blindfold. Why is that? Because for true justice to exist, it cannot have bias. You are supposed to weigh truth and facts, and the fact is, Mr. Speaker, too many black Americans in our country have been denied justice. Almost as soon as black Americans were freed in the South, they were expressly and explicitly targeted. In fact, by 1870, 95% of those imprisoned in the South were black Americans. Then came Jim Crow-era laws meant to disenfranchise and tear apart black communities. Then politically motivated criminal codes that led to mass incarceration. And the facts of a biased system are there, Mr. Speaker. Black Americans are given sentences 20% longer than those given to white males who are convicted of the same crimes. Black Americans suffer a much higher percentage of wrongful convictions. In fact, they're twice as likely to be exonerated through DNA evidence. Black Americans are more likely to be stopped and searched, more likely to receive the death penalty, the list goes on. Study after study shows that race matters at every single level of the criminal justice system. The nature of plea deals offered, bail hearings, sentence lengths, parole and probation decisions, access to a lawyer, which is something that we voted on last week on partisan lines. Political rhetoric steeped in fear and not fact has been used to justify what is by definition an unjust system. And I want to leave us with some words from Kimba Smith Pradia. She's a Glen Allen native who was pardoned just last month, although I hear they're handing those out to everyone nowadays. Not speaking of you, Mr. Speaker. She was sentenced to 24 and a half years in prison for a first-time, nonviolent cocaine offense, and I want to remind our body, we've heard testimony on this floor about a similar offense that received a much different sentence and someone who was given a lot more grace and forgiveness. Kimba said, "Over the past 50 years, America has doubled down on a deeply troubling and counterproductive criminal legal system that perpetuates cycles of crime and inequality. It tears families apart, leaving children without their parents and communities fractured, all while siphoning resources away from education, mental health, and social programs hindering our nation's progress." Mr. Speaker, my hope with this speech is to remind those in this chamber that the history of our justice system is both black history and also current events. And any of us, any of us, so everyone in this room who's in a seat of power, should be analyzing criminal policies, not with a campaign lens, not only with a personal lens, but with a lens of what is just, fair, and aligned with truth and fact. Happy Black History Month. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, in the gallery today, we have youth and adults from the Community Outreach Coalition. I'd like to ask them to stand. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, the Community Outreach Coalition is dedicated to increasing educational attainment and improving economic mobility for marginalized communities in Virginia. Founded in 2008, they have served over 28,000 individuals, helping them to overcome barriers to success through diverse programs. From after-school remediation to workforce certification, they support individuals at all ages of their educational and professional journeys. Through community collaboration, their programs are located in the cities of Portsmouth, Norfolk, Suffolk, Franklin, Chesapeake, and Hampton. The goal of the Coalition is to ensure these students have the resources, training, guidance, and opportunities they need to succeed in higher education and beyond. Mr. Speaker, members of the House, I hope it's the will of the body to extend to them a warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Clerk will call a calendar.
Calendar for today, Friday, February 7th, 2025. First category, Senate bills on third reading, uncontested calendar. By way of quick reminder, we debate, move amendments, and vote on third readings for all Senate legislation that's passed over. First category is the uncontested calendar. Up first, Senate Bill 785, which seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Real Estate Board, regulations related to fees charged to a licensee. This legislation reported committee on general laws.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaking of the bill.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speakers. Senate Bill 785 is the Senate cognate to my House Bill 1653, which passed unanimously out of this body. All it does is eliminate duplicative fee that is currently applied to realtors. If they need to change a branch office while still staying in the same principal place of business and also the same firm, they still have to pay a fee to eliminate that simple fee to change branches. I hope it's the will of the body to pass the bill.
Continuing with the block, top of page two of the printed calendar, Senate Bill 834 is legislation to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to alcoholic beverage control tied House exceptions. This legislation reported committee on general laws as well.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the body, Senate Bill 834 is identical to my House Bill 1703. It clears up some confusing language in the code dealing with interrelationships with our three alcoholic beverage tiers. The bill simply strikes that language and codifies what's been longstanding practice to prevent a manufacturer from being able to buy a retailer and create a monopoly. I'd move that we pass the bill.
Next up in the block, House Bill 1059, which is legislation to amend and reenact three sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Contractor Transaction Recovery Fund, claims limits, license threshold amounts. This legislation reported committee on general laws.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senate Bill 1059 is identical to my House Bill 1707. The bill updates the monetary project list for Class A, B, and C contractors and increases the payment limits under the Contractor Transaction Recovery Fund. Those limits were currently established in 2010, so this just keeps up with inflation. Mr. Speaker, I'd move that we pass the bill.
And the last bill in the block is Senate Bill 1089, which seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority, operational plan submission, as well, this legislation reported from general laws.
The delegate from Winchester, Delegate Wally.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senate Bill 1089 is identical to my bill HB 1567. This bill was voted unanimously 97 to 0. The bill removes requirements VDP to prepare financial statements and have them ordered by the APA, which has already been prepared. It ensures alignment with financial reporting requirements for other state entities. Appreciate the will of the body to pass this bill.
Shall the bills pass? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes. 94, no 0.
Ayes, 94, no 0. The bills pass.
Continuing the next category on the calendar, page three of the printed calendar, Senate bills on third reading, regular calendar, three measures in this category, beginning top of page three with Senate Bill 811, which relates to alcoholic beverage control, third-party delivery licenses, repeal. This legislation was reported from committee on general laws with amendment nature of substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kreizik.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the House adopt this committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. The committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kreizik.
Senate Bill 811 is identical to my bill that passed this body 90 to 6. The bill removes the sunset on third-party delivery of alcohol and has some technical clarifications. I move that we pass the bill.
Shall the bill pass?
Clerk will close the row. Ayes. 86, no 7.
Ayes, 86, no 7. The bill passes.
Next up is Senate Bill 815. This legislation seeks to amend and reenact sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Residential Landlord and Tenant Act, adverse action by landlord-tenant remedies. Legislation reported committee on general laws with an amendment.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Hernandes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the committee amendments.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. The committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate from Norfolk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. SB 815 is identical to my HB 1872. This bill simply prohibits financial discrimination against protected tenants with prior eviction cases that were dismissed voluntarily, non-suited, or otherwise eligible for expungement. I move that the bill pass.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes. 49, no 45.
Ayes, 49, no 45. The bill passes.
And over on page three, last bill in this category, Senate Bill 830, now before you, which seeks to amend and reenact portions of the Code of Virginia, as well as the Acts of 2019, 2022, and 2024, all relating to eviction diversion pilot program. Name change, general application, expiration repealed. Legislation was reported committee on general laws.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolivar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senate Bill 830 is identical to House Bill 1623 from Delegate McClure. This bill removes the expiration date from the eviction diversion pilot program and makes it available to all general district courts statewide. Currently, it's limited to the cities of Danville, Hampton, Petersburg, and Richmond. The program's an effective way to keep people in their homes while also making sure that landlords are made financially whole. Mr. Speaker, I move that we pass the bill.
Shall the bill pass? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes. 76, no 18.
Ayes, 76, no 18.
Mr. Speaker, continuing with today's calendar, middle of page four of the printed calendar, next category, new category is Resolutions Regular Calendar. Resolutions Regular Calendar, first up is Senate Joint Resolution 273. This legislation confirms appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly June 1st, 2024. Legislation was reported committee on privileges and elections with an amendment.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the committee amendment, and I ask that the House reject the amendment.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The amendment is rejected. Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I request to sever lines 469 and 470 from the resolution.
Shall SJR 273 be agreed to with the exception of lines 469 and 470? The clerk will open the row.
Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Scott County, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, I'm trying to look it up real fast. Who are we removing? I'm just trying to figure that out.
The clerk want to report those lines?
Yes. Mr. Speaker, yes. Line 469 and 470 is Daniel Cortez of Stafford. And I'm sorry, and the joint, I beg pardon? 469? Yeah, I know. Just trying to find it. It's for the Veterans and Defense Affairs Joint Leadership Council, a veteran services organization, Daniel Cortez of Stafford.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
The delegate has the floor.
Just because I want to be confusing, because we just read out a name. What we're voting on now is all the other names on the list. So this is going to be a vote, so if you vote yes, you want everyone else on the list to be approved. Is that right?
The delegate is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Shall SJ 273 be agreed to? Clerk will open the row. Clerk will close the row.
Ayes. 94, no 0.
Ayes, 94, no 0. The resolution is agreed to. SJR 273 with the acceptance of lines 469 and 470 is agreed to. Shall lines 469 and 470 be agreed to? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes. Ayes, 22, no 68.
Ayes, 22, no 68. Lines 469 and 470 are not adopted.
Mr. Speaker, continuing with this category, new piece of legislation, now before you is Senate Joint Resolution 274. This legislation confirms appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly on October 1st, 2024. This legislation also is reported committee on privileges and elections with an amendment.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of the committee amendment, and I ask that the House reject the amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. The committee amendment is rejected. Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the resolution.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will open the row. The resolution is agreed to. Clerk will close the row.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, ayes, 94, no 0.
Ayes, 94, no 0. The resolution is agreed to. Delegate from Newport...
Just, Mr. Speaker, next... Mr. Speaker, next up is Senate Joint Resolution 275. This is confirming appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly August 1, 2024. This legislation reported committee on privileges and elections with line amendments.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the committee amendments, and I ask that the House reject the amendment.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
Amendments are rejected. Delegate Price.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I request to sever lines 279, 280, 282, 283, and lines 284 and 285 from the resolution.
Clerk will report the lines.
279. Mr. Speaker, for line 279 and 280 is Board of Visitors for Norfolk State regarding Lionel Spruill of Chesapeake.
All of them, 280.
I'm sorry, and then on, Mr. Speaker, I apologize, for the Board of Visitors of Old Dominion University, lines 282 and 283 are Brian Campbell of Richmond. And lines 284 and 285 is Stanley Goldfarb of Brenmore, Pennsylvania, also on ODU's Board of Visitors.
Shall SJR 275 be agreed to with the acceptance of line 279 and 280, lines 282 and 283, and lines 284 and 285? Clerk will open the row. Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 93, no 0, abstentions 1.
Ayes, 93, no 0, abstentions 1. The resolution is agreed to.
So now we move into the severed lines. So the lines 279 and 280 are now before you.
Shall lines 279 and 280 be agreed to?
Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Lefwitch.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Despite being a member of the opposite side of the aisle, former Senator Spruill was a good friend of mine. He's been a huge contributor to the Chesapeake community, and I would ask folks to support
Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 46, no 48.
Ayes, 46, no 48. The resolution is not agreed, the resolution is rejected. The lines are rejected. 279, 280 are rejected. Clerk will call the next two.
Next, several lines, lines 282 and 283.
Shall 282 and 283 be agreed to? Clerk will open the row. Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 44, no 48.
Ayes, 44, no 48. The resolution is rejected. I mean, lines 282 and 283 are rejected.
And finally, Mr. Speaker, the last several lines, 284 and 285 are now before the body.
Shall lines 284 and 285 be agreed to? Clerk will open the row. Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 46, no 48.
Ayes, 46, no 48. The resolution is rejected. The lines 284 and 285 are rejected.
Mr. Speaker, continuing with this category, new piece of legislation, Senate Joint Resolution 276. This legislation confirms the appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly on January 10, 2025. Legislation was reported committee on privileges and elections.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 94, no 0.
Ayes, 94, no 0. The resolution is agreed to.
And finally, this category, Senate Joint Resolution 286 is before you. It confirms appointments by the governor of certain persons communicated to the General Assembly December 1, 2024. This legislation also reports committee on privileges and elections.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the row.
Ayes, 94, no 0.
Ayes, 94, no 0. The resolution is agreed to.
Mr. Speaker, that completes the live portions of today's calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House is returned to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communication?
Mr. Speaker, no communications, simply announcements for the meeting schedule. Appropriations is not meeting today. Neither is the Courts of Justice. However, in lieu of the committee time, the Courts of Justice Civil Sub will meet 15 minutes upon adjournment of the House. They'll be up in the House North Subcommittee Room on the second floor. Also, the Courts of Justice Criminal Sub, they'll meet 15 minutes upon adjournment of the House. They'll be on the second floor, but down the hall in House Room C. So the two subs of courts are the only legislative meetings that I'm aware of today. Therefore, looking ahead to Monday, February 10, the Finance Subcommittee is not meeting, Subcommittee Number 1 is not meeting, and the full Committee on Education is not meeting. However, at 9 o'clock on Monday, the Committee on Education's Higher Ed Subcommittee, they will be meeting. They'll be down in the House Committee Room A, down in the lower level. Mr. Speaker, apologize for going back in time. The Committee on Communications Technology Innovations, Communications Subcommittee, they're meeting at 8 o'clock in House Room C, up on the second floor. And then, once the Subcommittee is finished, or at 10 o'clock, they'll figure it out. Communications Technology Innovations, the full committee, will be meeting. That's listed at 10 o'clock in the House Committee Room C. Appropriations, Comp and Retirement is meeting Monday morning at 9. They'll be in the House Appropriations Committee Room up on the 12th floor. And then finally, Mr. Speaker, the two caucuses will be meeting. The Democratic Caucus will be meeting at 11 o'clock, and they'll be in House Room 1. And Republican Caucus is 11:30, and they will be in House Room 2. That's all the announcements I have.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourn today, it adjourn to reconvene on Monday, February 10 at 12 noon.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves up when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene Monday, February 10 at 12 noon. As men in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Mr. Speaker, move that the House do now adjourn.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring moves that the House do now adjourn. As men in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Monday, February 10 at 12 noon.